Does anybody need a packet over here?
About, let's stand and open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clark will take the roll.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Here.
Mr. Putoff?
Here.
Mr. Sextro?
Here.
Mr. Burke?
Here.
Ms. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Albrecht?
Here.
The first thing on the consent calendar is the minutes of the previous meeting. They've been distributed for everybody to read. Is there any additions, corrections, or changes? May I have a motion to be approved?
Removed. Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get the committee reports and we'll begin with the finance of the committee.
Mayor, as I reported Sunday, we're closing out 2022 strong. A year or month revenue tax receipts were about 1.3, about $200,000 over last year same time. We're almost $2 million over tax receipts same time last year for the year. And the most important part is that we are quite a bit over on the receipts and I missed it. Receipts over expenditures for the year. So we're very positive. We're ending the year strong and all things are good. Oh, I'm sorry. The, about 2.3 million over, I'm sorry, I missed that number for the year. So over expenditures. So all very positive.
Feels good, doesn't it?
Does feel good, especially how we started the year, not worrying about where we were going to be and what was going to happen. Gorman Farm, the fall farm fund days concluded last weekend in October. And they had, on average, about 300 visitors a weekend and $3,000 in additional sales. So it was a positive new event for the farm. The school field trips, every fourth grader from Princeton schools has visited the farm. I think it's a great additional benefit that is providing Princeton schools that they get to spend a day at the farm. So that has been concluded. And something that you miss out on sometimes is the fundraising, the constant fundraising, especially with everything that Nicole's doing there, is they've had individual gifts now. Oh, almost $100,000 for various specific items that just shows how hard she's working to add additional amenities to the farm. So kudos to her. Rec Department, the pool bid is in and Swim Sway Safe was the only company to submit a new bid. So they'll be continuing to operate the pool, which it's nice to have the continuity that they provide. They certainly know what they're doing and we all enjoy the pool and everything that they provide. Halloween Fest was enjoyed by over 900 people. It was beautiful weather and thank you to the 39, five members and 19 recreation employees who helped make it a success. The gingerbread house making event is already sold out. And that's about it for rec. The Engineering and Service Department, leafbag distributions. As of Sunday night, there were still some bags left. They've distributed over 24,000 bags to 330 households. James, are there still any, still a few bags, a few? So if you need them, you better grab them quick. The electric vehicle station, the charging station, it's going to be installed to the right of the police department garage. It should be. It is now operable.
Yeah, it looks like it's on.
It is. It is now operational within the last couple of days. It is now operational.
And there's two.
Yeah.
Two spots.
Yeah. But we are asking that people limit the charging to six hours per vehicle and there is no overnight charging is permitted. Lastly, the service building, we've been just continuing to monitor and evaluate options for and plans for the new service department storage building. Likely location will be next to the existing storage facility by the soccer field. But we're still evaluating size, exact location. And cost. That's a big part. So I have, Mayor.
Any questions, comments? Okay, if not, we'll take the police and fire next.
Okay, we're going to start with fire. Mark Bond will be retiring on January 5th. So more hiring processes to go on. The hiring committee will be meeting for the fire department vacancies, for some of the fire department vacancies on November 29th. So, and then we'll have a new process to start next year when the new guidelines are in effect. And the new guidelines are, or part of the ordinance that we have where we're converting from a 53-hour work week to a 48-hour, average 48-hour work week. And there are 10 specified holidays for the fire department and Veterans Day replaces the floating holiday for the fire department only. And the work schedule rotation changes the number of days, which drives another ordinance we have to address the fact that you, we finish one rotation near the end of December, but the next rotation doesn't start until January. So those are two ordinance, two ordinances that we have. And also we had discussions on a full-time fire inspector. We'll be discussing that more at the December meeting. From the police end, time flies. Our cadets will be finishing the program at Butler Tech before Thanksgiving. Last week, I think we have a date now for the Ohio Peace Officers Exam. They have to, they have to graduate and then take the peace officer exam and pass that. It looks like that date is going to be December 6th.
So we'll know by the December meeting? To swear them in?
By the December which meeting?
Council meeting.
Council meeting, yes.
Will we get the results by the time?
Yes, they'll know the, we'll know the results by then. So worst case.
I don't think we're going to swear. I'd just swear them in my office.
In your office.
He's going to swear them in. But we, we still have to pass an ordinance.
Yeah.
And the question is if we have the results quick enough, can we swear them in? I mean, excuse me, can we pass the ordinance not at that meeting, but at the special counsel meeting that we have for hiring set up so that they're fully, fully operational? But we don't know that until we get everything confirmed.
Is that the one on the 7th that you're talking about?
Yes.
Well, I'm going to suggest to council that we have an executive session, an executive meeting on the 13th of December. What's that for? What's that for, David?
Well, the council isn't going to give us an executive session.
Yeah.
You have to give me a reason.
Had to do with your meeting, your meeting today. Oh, that's right. Yeah. It's for potential occupants of Arrow Hub Drive. Yeah.
Okay.
Want to bring that council up to date on that. I'm suggesting the 13th. And that'll be, well, that's our council night, is it not?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll have the executive session as part of the council meeting.
Okay. Cultural arts, the photo exhibit is still up. And I think we're going to keep it up even past November 12th that we talked about, yes. Art Ventures, October sold out to Metamora. November event last Friday was probably sold out. Pretty close. Okay. And the December event, which I don't have the date for, but is at the Pyramid Hill Sculpture Park Lights with Dinner at Hyde's Cafe in Hamilton. And then this Saturday, the local ink art market with 40-plus vendors will be at the Rec Center. Sparkling wine tasting in December, sold out in two hours. So what can we say? Wine tasting works in Evendale. And, and we've launched the online donations for the elevator fundraising campaign. So stay tuned for more information or we'll get that up on the website so people can contribute that way. Building, planning, and zoning, Acres is going to put up a temporary tent over their outdoor dining. There were 24 permits issued last month. And we discussed the need for either clarification or a new ordinance addressing the sale of fireworks. So there's going to be some more discussion on that. I believe Mark is working with Kathy to come up with what a proposed ordinance should be. We don't think our existing ordinance necessarily covers the commercial sale of fireworks. Okay. And there's Miami Valley Planning and Zoning Workshop that's going to be held on December 2nd. Understand it's a good workshop to attend. Council members are welcome and please let Mark know if you're interested in attending.
I want to go ahead and, since I have the information in front of me, I'd like to go ahead and advertise it on ICRC as far as the, the number and the way to donate to the, to the ADA for the, for the art center. You can text the word DONATE to 513-995-1687 to send your contribution in. And we will also try to get that out on the, on the website.
Right.
Can you repeat that number again, please?
Yes. It's 513-995-1687 and you just text the word DONATE.
Any other comments, suggestions? If not, that will complete the fire and police report. Rec?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a few things. One, I want to thank council and everybody who participated in the town meeting. I thought it went very smooth last week or last Sunday. Nobody yelled at us or screamed at us and I think that's a sign that we're doing something right, so. But everything went very well. I just want to note that the, the sign situation on I-75, they had filed a lawsuit to try to overturn our decision. Then they withdraw, withdrew that lawsuit and they did not follow up on a second request for a smaller sign. That time limit is passed now, so it looks like that's the end of the situation with the huge sign that was going to be on I-75.
Excuse, Kathy, they did dismiss it though without prejudice, as I read that, which means they could refile it. So it's not final, final.
It is because they had a certain number of days from the final administrative decision.
Okay.
The 30 days under Chapter 2506, so.
The refile would be out of time. Okay.
So they're done. Our recreation interviews are going to go forth on the, what day, David?
7th. December?
7th.
7th. And they go from 5 o'clock till 8:30. So prepare for, bring your lunch. Prepare for a long evening. I, somebody brought up that some of our naming signs of buildings are missing and they've been, they've been set out for refurbishing, so they're not stolen, they're not gone. They should come back, but that's where they are is with the sign painter for some. We were trying to re-touch up all of the signs in the village, all the signs in the village. On the 7th, you wanted to go to 9 o'clock because the last one starts at 8:30. Yeah, it starts at 8:30. It'll go to 9, go to 9 o'clock, yeah. I looked over some of the drone footies that was produced on Griffin Heritage Farm. I'm not sure I understand it all and maybe I need some interpretation of exactly what's there, but there's nine, I think eight or nine pictures that have been done. Some of them start from the fire chief's house and go on up through the farm. But I, I don't understand all of them, quite a, quite a few. So maybe somebody on the committee will enlighten me quite a bit as to what's being done with them.
Can you share those pictures?
Please.
Can you share those pictures out? The drone video or the pictures?
I think somebody can enlighten me as to how to share those pictures out.
Okay, okay. I'd like to see them.
Maybe above my pay grade, but yeah, we can send them out. That's all I have. If there's anything else that anyone else has? Okay, we have a guest with us this evening from Hamilton County and she's here to talk a little bit about the things that are available from the county. And would you please state your name and what you do with the county?
Yes, thank you very much. Hello, my name is Joy Landry. I'm with Hamilton County Resource. That's the branded name for the county's recycling and solid waste district. So I just want to give you a couple of highlights of, again, the services that we provide to all of the communities in Hamilton County, give you a quick glimpse of what's going to be happening here in the future. And frankly, we'll be coming back to you early next year, asking for your support for what is called our solid waste plan. So if I could get started?
Well, for some reason, Joy, it is not moving on.
Not advancing? Okay. Well?
I will play with it. I just have to wing it.
I will wing it and if any of the council members are interested, I'd be happy to email the PowerPoint to you tomorrow too.
Why don't you just go ahead and email it to everybody?
I'll do that. I have it, so I'll, I'll put it, email it to everybody.
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate that. So as I said, I wanted to highlight a couple of our programs. So something that we offer each community every year, we refer to it as our residential recycling initiative. And this is basically grant money that goes out to the communities to help support your recycling programs. It is based on population and the community's recycling rate. So for example, in our most recent completed year, 2021, the Village of Evendale, you have a recycling rate of about 20.4%. So that means of all of the garbage that's created by your residents, 20% of it is getting recycled, which is actually excellent, one of the higher rates in Hamilton County. And so you received about $7,330 from Hamilton County Recycling to support those efforts. So that's one program that we're actually looking to expand here in the future. Other critical program that we started in 2016, we partner with the Hamilton County sheriffs and we have a dedicated sheriff's deputy who investigates illegal dumping. So if you were to have an issue here in your community, say a resident calls City Hall, complains, hey, somewhere along 42, somebody dumped a bunch of tires or mattresses, you can call us, we'll send Deputy Peak out and he will conduct an investigation and basically try to track down the perpetrators and yes, bring them to court. So that's another great program we have to try to eliminate that problem throughout Hamilton County. In addition, we offer drop-off programs. So in October, for example, we had a two-day program where residents around Hamilton County, if they had household hazardous waste, this is things like leftover pool chemicals or pesticides, things that shouldn't go to the landfill, they could properly dispose of those free of charge at this event. We also have three sites throughout Hamilton County for yard trimming. So when we have high wind days like we did this past Saturday, a lot of limbs come down. If people want to clean that up out of their own backyard, they can take those things to those different locations and again, have those deposited and taken in and ultimately becomes compost. So just a couple of quick highlights of things that we offer throughout the county. Now getting into our solid waste plan, we operate under a 15-year plan. This is actually required by Ohio EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, but they also require us to update the plan every five years. So we are almost at the tail end of that process. The draft plan went to Ohio EPA this summer. They basically approved the draft plan and now here we are coming to all of the communities because again, we need your support. What is required is for us to get 60% of the municipalities to approve the plan and also the city of Cincinnati, since they are the largest city in Hamilton County, we need their approval. So I'm happy to report the last time we did this, we received 100% approval. So that's what we hope to, to achieve again. Now the report itself is over 300 pages. Obviously, I'm not going to walk you through all that, but I would like to hit a couple highlights that are coming out of that five-year plan update. So previously, I talked a little bit about that residential recycling program that we have. We're looking to expand that. Now while the budget is estimated to remain at about $800,000 annually, to be divided among the 48 communities, previously that, those dollars was only based on how much your residents recycled. Under this new plan, every community can also include any commercial recycling. So for MICA, any of the small businesses along 42, even Gorman Farms, anything that they compost, for example, all of that can be basically included in, say, the Village of Evendale, obviously the more that you recycle and divert from the landfill, the more dollars that you can get for the residential recycling program. So that's a major change and an opportunity for communities to get more support.
Question, question?
Yes, sir.
We have a shred day.
Excellent.
Would that count toward that?
That, yes, actually that would. Those materials that you take in.
You can bring paint, you can bring paper, you can bring electronics. And how many tons we recycled last year and we're paying for all of that.
Absolutely. I mean, if it's being diverted from the landfill and properly disposed, that can count, yes.
James, noted. Okay, I'm sorry.
Can we go back 10 years?
I have you working up here now.
You're up on the screen.
I'm not sure what screen, which.
Perfect. Nope, you're right where we need to be. Thank you. The last thing to note is that there will be a minimal threshold. So some of the smaller communities, like say something like Golf Manor, typically they don't get as much dollars because their population is smaller. Every community will get a minimum of $5,000 a year. So that's another change. Next slide. So the other thing we want to do here in Hamilton County, actually 86% of the waste that's generated comes from what we call the commercial industry, office parks, et cetera. So we're looking to dramatically increase the budget and basically put more teeth behind promoting and working with businesses to help them recycle more and reduce waste. So that's another significant change. The last thing we wanted to mention is as part of this process, we did hire a consultant. They looked at all of the programs that we offer, want to make sure that we're reaching all audience, all community members in Hamilton County and giving everybody an opportunity to participate in our programs. So that is again, a separate report. All of the reports from the draft can be found on our website, which is hamiltoncountyr resource.org. You can download and read any of those reports. You can download and read any of those reports for yourself if you have any questions. You can reach out to myself, or on the last slide, which you all will get via email, thanks to Barb. The very last slide, Michelle Balls, she is our, what we call our Solid Waste Manager. She's in charge, basically, of the entire district that I'm representing here tonight, and we'd be happy to answer any of your questions here now, or if you have any follow-up questions after this evening.
We take solid waste, or we take recycling seriously.
Good to hear.
We can tell you, we have, we pay for recycling for all the residents that want to do it and put their cans out on a weekly basis.
Excellent.
And our leaves, as was indicated, 24,000 bags were put out for leaves, which would go into the recycling system. We've won several awards for our recycling efforts that are on display out in the administration, so we take recycling, we spend some bucks on it.
Yes.
Any little bit can help.
Yes, absolutely. You know, something a lot of folks don't realize is that recycling is actually good for the economy. So for example, right now, cardboard is in such high demand that the cost of cardboard has gone up like four times. So we need people to recycle all those Amazon boxes, especially with, you know, the holiday season coming up. You know, we want folks to recycle those materials because it goes right back into the economy. So recycling is value beyond just helping to protect the environment. Yes, sir?
Where are your three drop-off locations for branches and stuff like that?
Yes, so there is one out in Anderson Township. Then there's another at Rumkey, out in Colrain Township. And then the other one is on the west side, it's, I believe, in Greentownship, on the grounds of a elementary school now. We had to move it. It was at a local park, but they put in, I think, like a pickleball facility or something like that. Again, if you go to Hamilton County Resource, you could find those listed.
Anyone else have questions? Tom?
Yeah, I have a question. Joy, is there any reason why municipality wouldn't support your program?
Not, you know, not one that I could think of.
Because you said you attempted to get 100% participation.
Yes, we, one year, there was one community that, I don't know if they just were too busy with their own business, but they didn't get around the ratification. So 10 years ago, we missed it by one, one small village out on the west side. But yeah, what's interesting about our organization is, for all intents and purposes, it's our job to put ourselves out of a job. Our budget doesn't come from the Hamilton County General Fund, it comes from something that's called tipping fees. So ironically, the more garbage that goes to the landfill, the bigger our budget. So we're looking to do the opposite.
Any other questions or comments?
Thanks for coming. That was very...
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much for your time this evening, and happy election day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're ready to go to the ordinances tonight, and the first ordinance on the agenda is ordinance 22-77, and I'd like permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
An ordinance approving a transfer from the contingency fund to the tax department and declaring it as an emergency. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 22-77 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 22-78, and I need permission to read it by title only. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
An ordinance approving the transfer from the contingency fund to the administrative department and declaring it as an emergency. I need permission to read it by, or a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
I now declare, excuse me, ordinance 22-77 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 22-79, I need permission to read it by title only. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
An ordinance approving the additional appropriation in the general fund to complete a transfer to the service department for appropriation of emergency repair work and declaring it as an emergency. This is an auto accident that took out a traffic box. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Now declare ordinance 22-79 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 22-80, and I need permission to read it by title only. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing payment of the amounts due upon certain contracts requiring certification of the availability of funds and declaring it as an emergency. This is the then and thou. I'd like a motion to read, to suspend, suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 22-80 adopted as an emergency. Ordinance 22-81, I'd like permission to read it by title only. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for operation of the municipal pool and declaring it as an emergency. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Now may I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Now may I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 22-81 adopted as an emergency. Ordinance 22-82, permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to exercise the option of years 2023 and 2024 contained in the contract with Fitnes LLC for the operation of the fitness center and authorizing the ordinance 20-76, authorized by ordinance 20-76 and declaring it as an emergency. May I have, may I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.